Six o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. All board members are present. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We only have one item on the agenda tonight, so I'd look for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Pat. Sorry. Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to the strategic planning process, and I will turn it over to Gary Lee.
Thank you very much, board members. I'm just glad that tonight when I did the pledge of allegiance, it wasn't my belly button looking at the camera here. So it usually happens when I'm meeting with you guys. First two things that you have in front of you are just some reminders of that in the heart, we harp and we harp and we harp on this. This one, the top, is governance. Where you're at, bottom is administration. All right? And you constantly have to ask yourself, is this my job? All right? Just keep that in mind. Because that's gonna, when we start doing action tasks, you know, then when we talk about that a little bit, you gotta decide if this is something you need to be doing or if it's somebody else. Okay? And just how it all hooks together again. The superintendent's gonna have goals that you'll evaluate the superintendent on. You're gonna have goals. We're gonna get to those later on tonight. And then it all flows down into the staff and into the classroom. And evaluation and accountability and all those things that we've talked about have to flow along with this. So information goes down and comes back up again. All right. Setting those two things aside. So what I did on, it's strategic. This is what it's gonna look like roughly. You know, I'll plan on a page. We'll try and get it down to just shrink a few things and just get it on one piece of paper. But I went through it last week, and then I went through it again today. I made a couple small changes today on it. So let's just go through it. And the first, first page, we won't have to do much on, but it's where we start looking at goals and objectives. Just kind of review one at a time and kind of see where we're at. So what I took is, when you guys did your survey from your committee, we had three results that came. And a lot of you said the same thing, but with different words. Along with Aaron and Jen, they did one too that you saw for that meeting. So I took those four and I combined it and tried to summarize them and get them down. And so now it's a matter of, are there some tweakings that we're gonna do? We're not gonna do action steps at this point because that's Aaron and Jen's job. What we're gonna do is take a look at this and then we're gonna ask the question as we're going through these objectives, is this reasonable? That's one thing you have to keep in mind. We got a lot of things here. And we're probably gonna identify more once we go into the self-evaluation. But at some point, you have to say, what's reasonable? One other thing we don't have on here is I have no dates on any of these objectives. And so that's where some of this discussion should lead tonight. Is, so on the objective, we want something definable that by this date, we're gonna start working on. Once again, this is all flowing downhill. And how much can flow without the ones downhill drowning, without them drowning? All right. So the only comment I have on the front, I think we all agreed on that, was as I read this again for the ninth time under curriculum, the second sentence, students have worth. And that just kind of rubs me the wrong way. You know, we actually have to say the statement that they have worth. All right? And so I would say that students are challenged by an education. You know, maybe if you really want the word worth in there, you know, I'm okay with it staying, but it just seemed a little odd to me as I was reading it for the last sentence there. So that's the only comment I got on that front page.
Maybe something like, you know, students should have a challenging educational environment.
Or you can even say students will have
Yeah.
challenging. Thoughts on that?
The only thing is like, okay, we're starting out by saying challenging here. Curriculum must be challenging and flexible.
Notice that.
Students are challenged by an educational environment.
That is dynamic and responsive to the changing needs.
Just delete those three words.
I think it'd be okay to just take the have worth and. So then it would go, curriculum must be challenging and flexible. Students are challenged by an educational environment that is dynamic and responsive.
The only other thing that as we're talking here and thinking, we could make this one big long sentence and say curriculum must be challenging, flexible, and the students will be challenged. And the students are challenged by an edu- we'll just leave it, and the students, if we wanted to make it one big long word, one sentence. Or we'll just take out the three. Either one or one. I don't wanna spend too much time on that.
You could probably really just put a comma after flexible.
Yep.
And say everything else in the Cardinals is all one, one sentence under each letter.
Yeah.
We'll do that. Curriculum must be challenging and flexible. Students, I'll probably put the comma, okay? Or should I put an and in there? That was okay, all right? When I put it in, it'll probably tell me to put a semicolon. Is there anything else on the front page? I don't think so. We went through this numerous times. So, okay? Let's go to the second page and start going. So on the top, we had our four focus areas. We had combined student achievement and support into one. We had added community to communications, outreach and marketing. We had leadership and facilities. So as we, as I was looking at the goals that people put in, it was across the board, the world's best workforce. Because there's, despite its flaws, there's good objectives behind the world's best workforce as to what we want for outcomes. All right? So with that, what I've seen some places do, they just list the five goals of the world's best workforce there. But because we added support into this, I threw, I put some of the support ones underneath the world's best workforce. And I'll move them if you guys want. That's not a problem. And that was my, my thought process when I did that. So we have the five goals up at the very beginning. An objective one dash, one, one point one. We also have then asking for accountability or evaluations. Now, what we could do there is we could put them together in one objective if we wanted to. Or because the first one is just establishing the committee, I thought we'd leave them separate, that the reporting would be separate.
I think they need, they need to be separate.
We need to establish an advisory committee.
All right? And then on each of these, you have to understand though, as we hand them off to Aaron and Jen, they're gonna put tasks and assign people to these objectives. Okay? And they'll come back to you with, I'm gonna send Jen the worksheet. Basically the same thing I sent you already that has a section for action tasks. Clean this up after we've made any changes today. And she'll get that, that the two of them can work on that as time moves forward. Okay? And then we had the third objective, providing relevant and timely professional development for staff. This goes to the support portion of this focus area. And then maintain a safe and supporting welcome environment for all students and staff. I could've put that down under facilities, but I left, I just left facilities as being strictly the physical plant. What do we gotta do with the physical plant? All right. So do we wanna put some dates on here? On these first four? Keep in mind, we got other things to do down the road also.
Aaron, when do you start doing the world's best workforce? Putting the paperwork together, evaluating what the plan is? Does that start in the spring or is that more in the fall?
Well, the college and career readiness pieces in the fall, 'cause we start planning that. The graduation rates, you don't know until the end of the year. The K three literacy plan isn't due until July one. Then the other, they're kind of, the reports are all due June or July. But like college and career readiness, you start, you would start and act, you know, we start doing those things in the fall.
Okay.
But the other stuff where you get the data, you won't be able to collect until the end of the year. So you could start doing some actions, but you won't get results until the end of the year.
Yep, that makes a lot of sense.
So when would be a good, when, when does it make sense to get this advisory committee established?
We're already in the middle of the year. So now we're, it's more if we're already doing things and gonna collect results here at the end of the year.
Right.
I mean, if they wanna see the end result and then know how to plan.
That would probably be.
So they can see where the, what the end is and then help plan moving forward after that. They're really one of you, what's a committee would do now?
Right.
But they could see the end result and what the, this all, this is what, shooting for now in the fall, we can make.
So are you saying like, spring?
I think like March, I was saying like March, April first.
That might be.
May.
I would closer, I'd say May because you're gonna wanna start something and, you know, we're gonna start planning in August and September. Or implement, you know, implementing in September, but.
So May first?
I'd say so, maybe.
I would say May first.
Establish an advisory committee.
And we put right in front of it, by May, by the end. I'll say by May first, establish.
Because if you wanna see results, I mean, we'll have a good idea on the graduation, but like K three literacy plan, I don't do that till June 'cause I need the data
Yep.
from the teachers. And then they give me that after the last day.
Here we're establishing the committee.
Yeah, if it's, if it's established, it just kinda wanna see how the end of the year.
As I say, it might be good to see how the end, where we ended up to get in good ideas for going into the next round.
Yeah. And, you know, and then they'll know from you presenting at this advisory committee meeting, they'll know what your timeline is. May, this is gonna happen. June, we're gonna get this number in, you know? Then they can help, you know, plan some opportunities.
So on this next one, providing annual evaluations, you know, that, that one really, so you're saying in June, you have everything for this year?
Yeah, 'cause I have to submit that K three. I think it's July one. You know, the graduation rates come out with the MCA scores. So that might be later in the summer. So evaluating what really.
August?
August?
Yeah, so I was gonna say by August 30th, sometime in August, pre-August meeting, some report on the world's best workforce.
So it's like the state gets us the.
Yes. Yes. So I'm not gonna put an actual date. I'm just gonna say by August 2023. And then the next one, the next two, well, actually, the next one, I'd start looking at something for, as far as professional development, that you start setting that up for next fall sometime. And so we'll just say October of 2023.
October would be our first staff development date. And then we have a second fall, one in March. So yeah, October would be a good one to start.
And then I don't know if we necessarily need a date or number on the last one. I think, but that, when you start looking at any tasks that come from Aaron and Jen, you know, they'll be, this is a warm and fuzzy one. And so it's how, what kind of tasks that you can actually quantify that we're actually gonna do. So just kinda keep that in mind as we look forward in having that discussion. All right? Goal one is done. Off we go. Goal number two. Students who graduate ready for career, for college careers and the daily tasks of life. We had, originally it just says, and life. And so I threw in the daily task. You want me to cross that off again? All right? Okay. And so an objective two point one, utilize staff and community to align, evaluate, plan, curriculum with annual reporting. So this goes to one of your policies. I just dropped Austin. There's a policy on curriculum which requires a community committee that's put together. So I would look at, when are you gonna, when do you really start looking at curriculum?
We're gonna be looking at science in February, maybe? February, March? Yeah, our next, probably not till March 'cause that'll be our next staff development folder. They're supposed to have, they're gathering information right now, the staff.
So maybe we just put by March 2023 then? Is that we start looking at having this? You're already working on it. But now, in order to fulfill what the policy says, we gotta bring in a few community members that if they wanna ban some books, then they have their time to do that. So that was a sarcastic thing.
And do we want that, yes. Do we want that to be a different committee than the advisory committee on the?
Yes. It's a different committee.
Okay.
This is, 'cause this is specifically gonna look at, science now, the new social studies standards are coming out. And that's gonna be coming in the next year or two. I don't remember, I don't remember the dates, but you got certain topics that you go on each year that you gotta take a look at, so.
That could actually fall under the systems accountability committee. We've never, we've had it for two years. We've never actually met.
Right.
But under that policy, and I can't remember if it's Minnesota State statute or not, but there's supposed to be community members underneath that policy.
Yep, yep. There is.
So you could use the systems accountability committee for that.
Okay.
Unless you want to rename that one. So think about that when you're coming into this next number. You may wanna rename that committee. And, and just.
To have it be what?
Curriculum.
Curriculum.
Yeah. And there is statute on that. And so all the, you know, there's been a lot of upheaval from parents across the state, across the nation, that they, they're saying that they don't have any input into curriculum. And in Minnesota, we are required by law for them to have input. And so, and frankly, I don't remember doing it when I was on board. Ever. You know? But it's one of those things that has, has to fall into place, so. If I'll find the statute here in just a second. So it's your policy six oh three. So you got a district advisory committee is what it's, is what it's called in your. And you also have a site team, which may end up, you can end up merging those two together as possible.
See, we have, we do have a site team, but there is not a parent involved in it.
Well, the site team is just, they have one parent, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a parent on ours.
How is this committee different from the one established? Goal number one.
Two separate things. I mean, they're looking at world's best workforce specifically there of all the measurements that are going on an annual basis versus this one is gonna just look at.
Part of curriculum as well, all right? I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's kinda.
It could be the same.
Sort of the same thing, but I, maybe not.
It could be the same thing, but it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a lot of work. You know, I'm afraid, I'm just concerned. The world's best workforce is more about the results and what's your plans on how to attack the five goals that are in there. Versus curriculum, we're focusing in just on math. And we're just focusing on sciences. And we're gonna talk through that process.
And having different committees, you may get different volunteers who have different ideas that you could take back and forth from each committee.
And we're talking volunteers too, so you're gonna kinda.
Yes, I know. In a small town, trying to find them, you're giving them a show, right? You know? That's part of the problem. And I think you'd be with the Minnesota statute one twenty B dot ten or eleven is where you're gonna find the requirement for those committees. Okay, so we're saying March twenty three. And then two point two is another warm and fuzzy one to a, to a certain extent. And that, you already have engagement opportunities right now. You have things, you got conferences, you got sporting events, you got different items. All right? But one of the things that has come out of this strategic plan is how are we gonna market this school? And how are we gonna get the community involved? All right? Some of this is gonna come back to you guys as when we start talking about the self-evaluation. All right? And some things, this is some things that maybe you can actually get involved at the task. This is a tough one. This is a tough nut to crack. Because if they don't wanna come, they're not gonna come. You know? And what can you do in order to get this, the center of the community versus something else? I don't have answers for you. And on one, on this, it might be, when we hand this off to administrators, is saying, let's, let's try something. All right? And you come up with one idea for that year, or whatever the case is. And you try and see if it works. You know? And is it, is it just communication? Or is it, how can you get them here in the building? You know, so they can see the building? That makes a big difference. And if they graduated from here and they haven't been in here for twenty years, you know, now they start having a little more ownership in this thing. So I don't have an answer for you on this one, but it's, this is something that you're just gonna wanna discuss. You know? And if you come up with ideas, you know, talk about it. And pass, and pass them on up and down the line.
Okay, I have a question.
Yep.
So I know that the next step is going to be that, that Jen and Aaron are going to be setting up the tasks. But do we have any opportunity for input into thought?
Absolutely.
And like, what's the right avenue?
The avenue should be one-way communication to Jen and Aaron. And I would include everybody, the whole board. So that, say you had an idea on, on one of these items as a possibility.
Okay.
It's just, on this goal and this objective, one thought that came to mind is this. And just the one way, don't get into discussions back and forth. All right? But everybody should know about it.
So how do we let other people, how do we let other people? Will we send them a, a one-way text?
One-way, I wouldn't, I'd do it by email.
Email, I meant.
It's like, it's like when I send you guys an email at the very bottom, it says, do not reply all to this.
Yeah.
And so I would send it, attention Jen and Aaron.
Okay.
Copy on the rest of the board. Now you can have new board members.
Okay.
And make sure they know not to respond, to start in a dialogue and all these things. But you're gonna have ideas. And that's, that's good. That's the whole purpose of this, is to help each other. You know? But because you came up with that idea, it doesn't mean that it's gonna come back from them.
No. It's just.
This is still their deal.
It's a thought.
It's a thought.
Yeah.
This is a thought.
Yeah.
And, and so Jen's not here, but Aaron, you'll relay that that this stuff will come, not as thou must do it. It's coming as here. Here's, here's one thought that went through my head.
Right.
So, okay?
We wanna create a special discussion, like line item under the discussion, action items on the school board? Like agenda?
The board only means once a month.
Yeah, but I'm just saying like, for Deb's sake, like if she's sending it to Aaron and we all wanna discuss it, that should be put on the agenda.
Then you can, yeah, you can add that to the agenda that, you know, I wanna go ahead and add the strategic plan. I came up with this idea. I mean, you can add it the night of the meeting. That way, if there's nothing to discuss, you don't gotta skip over it.
We're gonna talk about some other things, I think, that you're gonna wanna add to your meeting when you look at this. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So on, on this two point two, I'm just gonna say for this 2024 school year, is all I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
What did I, did I say twenty two?
Twenty, twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four. Okay. Goal number three, communicate effectively with all stakeholders. Establish and implement a community, communication strategy for all stakeholders that includes both methods and content. What types of things do you wanna communicate and how? Now, I don't think that Jen and Aaron should be doing this one on their own. I think that there's some things that you as a board should look at as a possibility. I don't have any, I don't, I couldn't put any ideas in your head on how to do this. All right? But if you're going to establish this communication strategy, I would suggest that at one of your upcoming board meetings, that you sit down and have this discussion. What types of things do we wanna communicate? And what types of, and how are we gonna do it? And who is going to do it? I mean, there, there may be things that the board chair can communicate out to the public via, are you the communication person besides the tech person?
Kinda.
Kinda? All right? So that if things are gonna go out, either in a mail or, or an email, that that would all flow through Dylan then, and out there we go. But it has to be something that you all agree on. We don't wanna roll a board member just starting to send stuff out. Okay? It's gonna be something that you all agree on. And part of this is, I think, you know, you gotta take some responsibility for some of these things. And I want you all, you know, this is my personal opinion. If you decide not to, that's your decision. But my personal opinion is that you need to have some ownership because as we look at different, all the data that we've collected, there's been some talk about not trusting the board necessarily. Or that the board is a little dysfunctional, or whatever the case is. If you, as a group, can start communicating with the community and show some unity and, and the reasoning behind some decisions made, or whatever the case is, I think that would be good.
And that type of discussion. So we're always in a very public. We're always in a very public setting.
That's what we have, yep.
I get it, I get that, but. So if you're trying to say, we wanna communicate this out, alright? But two of the board members are like, I disagree with that. That's gonna be in the, that's gonna be already in the public eye that there's disagreement.
That's, that's.
There's no other way to do it.
That's the way democracy works.
Alright.
Alright?
But that's okay.
The, the key there.
I just wanted to see if there's.
Yeah, that's okay. And if, and if Kim's being a jerk. And, and he's disagreeing with something. The key there is that. Uh, code, we'll talk about that under the code of ethics. He votes no.
Okay.
Everybody else votes yes. Well, Tim goes, okay, you guys have spoke. And now I'm supporting the rest of you. Alright, I won't, I don't agree still, alright? But this is what the board, you as elected officials have chosen to do.
And so then, even though you have some descending votes.
Yep.
You could still do a public communication.
Absolutely.
That's from the board.
Yeah, majority of the board.
Alright.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to be sure about all those things.
That's, that's what we want, you know?
Yeah.
If you vote that Cassidy can no longer wear shorts to work again.
But you'll always, I mean, you'll always have. Not everybody's always gonna see it the same, and if you got people in the public that wanna sit there and magnify, oh, so-and-so did this and. And, and they wanna make it a big deal, well, it's not a big deal, really.
Right.
But you'll always have those people that are just. Gonna put a magnifying glass on it.
The worst thing, cause you're always gonna have the haters, if one of those goes to Tim now and says, oh, what do you think about that, you know? If Tim starts making one. Then that's a problem.
Mm-hmm.
But if Tim says, no, the board voted, we're moving on.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we're good. Alright. So, when do we wanna start working on this? And who do you want to work on it? This is another one that it might be good to have some teachers involved.
Should we try to look at what some of the other districts might be doing?
That'll be part of this. You know, when you get to the action steps, that might be something that you do is look at what other districts.
I mean, other districts have, you know, like Riceville has Nelson Media Company, they'll, somebody will get an award, they'll put it on and they'll use social media through this Nelson Media Company and make a video and. So I mean, everybody does it differently. I guess it's how in-depth you wanna be, you know? But it's, it's all marketing.
Yep, and how do the residents of Leroy Olstrander, how do they prefer to be contacted?
Well, I was gonna say a survey, you know, I mean, you can't make everyone happy no matter what. But if you've got eighty percent that say they like Facebook.
Yeah.
And say two percent that say, I wanna postcard in the mail, I'm sorry, we're gonna go with Facebook. So maybe we need to reach out to the parents, the community members and say, what do you guys, what are you missing here, what are you not seeing? And what do you think can help us make this better? I mean, it's one thing for us to sit around the table, but I don't know what the guy down the street wants.
No.
Remember us having like a social media, like position, like a stipend position a few years back? Do we wanna bring that back? Maybe possibility and research, you don't have them research? What the best options are and what people are using and, I mean, that's just an idea.
It's an idea, yeah. Like I say, there's companies out there, just like Riceville uses Nelson Media.
A social media.
There was a guy, there was a position that would post things and. Do like the analytics of certain things I would post during certain times because that was the most traffic.
Oh, okay.
On, on a certain site.
We had somebody hired to do that? Oh, interesting.
We had a review, it must sound like that's another committee. Doesn't it? So we, we have a communications, potentially a communications committee. And so, uh.
I don't think we can do this all right away.
No, I don't think you can either. So I'm thinking, yeah, maybe you wanna start looking at this next year sometime, for, you know, the twenty-four school year.
Yeah, because I think it's gonna be overwhelming. We can't do all this, correct?
So let's look at fall of twenty-three. Sometime. In the fall.
Aaron, who's the guy that made our video?
The one that didn't make the video?
Or what? They did, it never went anywhere. We saw the video.
Yeah, sorry, let me rephrase that. Um, who worked on that video?
We never got it.
Okay.
None of those schools, I think Grand Middle did only got it because the guy was from Grand Middle.
Okay, alright, we won't call anybody else, I'll just leave it to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there was a video, maybe.
There, there, there are some really, you know, we just, we just, uh. There's a couple out of Macao that we've used. And we just, you know, if you look at our website, we had a new one turned up. So there's, there's plenty of places. They're not cheap. They're not cheap, but there's.
No, but if they got drones and they got, I mean, they can.
Yes.
It's a, it's a big difference.
Another one that would be more reasonable. You can talk to, but I'm not sure of the level is Bethany Luther College out in Macau. Cause they got a pretty good media program. And so they got kids that are doing stuff all the time. Now, the next one kinda falls in line with. Uh, goal number three. And once again, it's. See, I actually got this in two spots. I forgot to take one out. I headed up above on two point two, and then I added it down at four point one. So we could completely scratch. Goal four, if you want, and leave it under goal two. Or remove that two point two and have it as a separate goal.
I would say remove two point two. Cause you know, the goal of engaging involved in the community in the school district here is huge. So I would, for me, I would say get rid of two point two and just leave it as four point one.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, so we got that one dealt with. Five, six, and seven under leadership. And we're gonna come back on this, guys, uh, when we go through the different things. But foster respect and positive relationships within. With the school district and the community. So implementing what we have is implement timely follow-up with all stakeholders. I don't know, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to work through that to find out. You know, this, this can mean everything from a parent calling a teacher, to have a discussion with the teacher. To calling Aaron, to calling Jen, to calling you guys. Or calling Dylan about something that's going on, you know, this is. I, I struggle with this. This is, should be our job in anything that we do. Is to have, but it was in the information that you guys gave me, and so that's why I have it here. So I don't know how we're going to monitor it.
Yeah.
That's the problem. I don't know how to monitor it. We monitor it at MSBA just based on, um, I just talk with my staff and whatnot to see. When are you getting back to people? Cause our phones and emails and everything just go twenty-four hours a day. And so, um. It's just kind of always monitoring to make sure we're following up with the problems. You give any input on that one, Aaron?
No, it's tough to put a timeframe on some, some, cause it all depends on what it's.
Yeah.
There's things you gotta immediately to, or ask them, something like you can get back in a couple days.
Yeah. And, and so that's gonna be, um. Timely, even if it's a couple days, that's still timely if that's what that task requires. The question is, how do we? Enforce this, or enforce or promote this type of, um, work behavior on an annual basis? That the T, it's clear to all the staff that you require timely responses. To parents, to other teachers, to whatever the case is. Monitoring it is gonna be a problem. Unless, the only way you're gonna find out is with complaints. That's the only way you're gonna find out. And, and then when that happens, when you get a complaint, it could be a one-off. Cause you're dealing with the crazy or whatever the case is. But, or there's something that has to be addressed with an employee. So on this one. I think we can leave it in there. I don't know if implement is the right word. Um, maybe we use a word like prioritize. I was thinking, I don't know.
Cause timely to you is different to timely to. Teresa, your timely is different, you know? I like more of the prioritize, cause that's actually, you know, what we have to do a day is like, if I have ten messages.
Yeah.
I have to prioritize.
Yep.
Yep.
First and what can, what can be last and what can be, you know what I mean?
Alright. Everyone good with the change?
Yes.
Yes.
The next one, seek feedback from the community. We've talked about that a little bit with communications up above. And that could be surveys, that could be all those types of things. And, um, but in this particular instance, it's how to survey the community in order to. Foster a positive relationship. Alright, just kinda keep that in mind. Uh, and maybe we're looking for just school year of twenty-four on that one. Like you said, we're, I'm just nervous about too many things on that. Okay, effectively lead and direct staff, alright? On this one, ensure the chain of command is followed in all situations. This goes for you guys. And it goes for parents. And it goes for teachers, and it goes for administrators and students, it goes for everybody. And every school district throughout the state, I deal with this problem almost every day. And it's at every one of those points. Where board members are going directly to teachers, or doing something like that, getting involved with things. Where teachers bypassing administration and going directly to a board member, cause they wanna get their way. You know, we got.
It happens here.
It happens everywhere, alright? And. On this one.
Can, can I add something?
Yep.
So. When we prioritize timely follow-ups. I think that helps to ensure the chain of command because. I think those two could really go hand in hand if we really work at it because if, if someone goes to their, the teacher. And the teacher doesn't respond in what they feel is a timely manner. Then there, they jump the gun and they go elsewhere. Versus, you know, if we have, if we have a policy that the teacher will get back to you within forty-two hours. Or you know, like, whatever the number is, but like, then, then if the parents don't hear back the next hour. They don't go, right? You know, like, we, I think if we sort of somehow set up, those seem like they could go together to benefit.
So maybe underneath this, maybe we end up with some training that's happening and communications that are happening. Uh, you know, communications up to parents, this is the way this works.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, like maybe if they're, if they haven't heard back, send another email, a reminder email, just checking, or if they do that two or three times and then they still get nothing.
And then you go there.
Right.
And you go to, you don't go to the board.
Right, not trying to, not trying to establish a set rule or anything, just throwing ideas out there like.
Yes, yes, yeah. So maybe that's part of orientation at the beginning of the school year.
Yes.
Okay, maybe something like that goes out already, I don't know, but I'll have to look at it. But those are the types of things that you can put on it. Also, it's training for staff. Also, for you as a board, and when we go through this, I'm gonna suggest. That you as a board, take ten to fifteen minutes every board meeting. To review certain parts of your policy. And get it fresh in your head as to way, this is the way we operate. Alright, you just set that as part of your professional development. And part of it'll be chain of command at some point. This is how we work. Okay? Alright? So for that one, we can really start with that, starting immediately, alright? Um, but there's gonna be tasks underneath, and some of them are gonna be. I would say we're gonna have a task underneath there for the board as part of reviewing policy. Okay? Okay, so let's go down to seven then, almost done. Create professional development plan for all leaders, uh, for all levels of leadership. You know, and so if the public's perception is that we're lacking leadership here, for whatever the reason is. Um, and then. We need to take time out from our busy schedules to actually learn about it and listen to what other people are telling you. When I got on the board, you know, having worked in a multinational high-tech company and working all over the world. I gained a little dinky fertile and I thought I knew everything. And I had, of course. And I gotta learn, you know, we, we all have to learn to be curious and listen. Instead of making up our argument without listening to the other person, just making up an argument and going after them. And we can all do this better. So whether it's going to MSBA training or finding other things that you as board members can do. Also, making sure that Aaron has time to go, cause the principal's associations and other associations. Have tons of leadership-type professional development. That it's a priority, he gets to go. Jen gets to go into the superintendent's. Your other directors, your business official, they have conferences to go to. That, that development gets to be played, anyone that's in a leadership spot. And that may even be to some of your booster clubs or whatever the case is, that you may wanna reach out to them. And just say, you're in a position of leadership now here, we want you to think. And maybe look at some opportunities for some webinar that they can sit in on, or whatever the case is. But there's a lot of possibilities here. Okay? You guys are getting used to me preaching all the time, I'm sorry. Okay. And that one, let's, let's do something, actually, that one can start, I would say, this spring. You know, that you start looking ahead to professional development and this, this is another thing that you as a board. Who's not gonna be on? Teresa's not gonna be on, who else is on?
Kes.
Kes, alright, so the, the rest of you have to make sure that you, every quarter or at least twice a year. You maybe talk about this a little bit, especially at the board level. You know, what kinda things, especially with these new guys coming on. You know, have you been to phase one? Have you been to phase two? Have you thought about three and four? You know, are you going to the conference? Are you going to the summer set? Are you gonna look at other board? There is a billion resources out there for boards, alright? Now, of course, we got the best, but there goes without saying. Alright, okay, so I'll just say spring of twenty-three on that one. Alright, last goal, let's get to it. Facilities are maintained and improved during. Facilities are maintained and improved to enhance learning. So the first one was more of facilities needs based on, and I assume you got a facilities committee. That looking based on the programming and the enrollment that you have, kinda coming up with some decisions or recommendations, not decisions, recommendations. As to what should be done in order to make the programming and the, you know, effective for the enrollment that you have. Looking at some of that, so that'd be board members, administrators, and probably some staff, you know, are involved with that. Implement, you I think you already have this, but making sure that you have an annual maintenance plan. So your custodial staff along with administration is like, this is what our plan is for this for this year, where we're going. And the last one is to have a long term plan that also includes financial planning. That makes sense. So I combined that one with another objective that someone had put in, so to put the two together. So I would, just for dates, throwing some things out. How many how many maintenance people do you have on staff? So maybe, you know, as this gets handed down, this is something that they could start on now, this this spring, I would, they probably already have it. Alright, but spring of twenty three for eight point two. And that'll be Jen and Aaron passing that off to them, get that created. The other two are gonna be more committee type work. And I'm thinking this is all. You guys are gonna have to, are we gonna do it, are we trying to do this, set this up for next fall? Or you wanna start chewing on it now?
Well, we're kinda doing some of it.
Yeah, there's.
So I guess if we just keep, keep picking away at it.
Which one, both of them?
Eight one and eight three, there, I think the facilities committee is already, you know, and Jen. Jen has her, you know, facility plan with different ideas and.
We've got long term projects on that, but we're still kind of, what would you say, still putting out fires or.
Yeah.
You know, right now to try to get to the point where we can.
Right.
Look at programming and stuff like that, cause the facility hasn't been really dealt with for probably ten years, so. So on this one, maybe we want to rewrite eight one and eight three and combine them is a possibility. To me, some of this was to the point of writing down tasks, action tasks versus an objective, you know, and so.
I I do think that when, so this kind of hit me where it says financial data with it. Is like when we're looking at, I know you've told me a lot of different times that how they set up the prioritize, you know, prioritize these things. But also along with that, like when we're looking at that as a board and even as the committee, when we're prioritizing it. But it's also like, well, is that project an eight thousand dollar project? Is that a hundred thousand dollar project? Like, you can prioritize the need, but there's also like, that's a need, but it's a hundred thousand dollar project, we have to start working towards that. That's a need, but it's eight thousand, I think we can do that this year. So I think I think putting that financial data with it might help help in decision making.
Yeah, it has to, cause you have to.
Right.
I think that is part of the spreadsheet, when it's known, there's a dollar amount on that spreadsheet.
Right.
And that is under one of Jen's goals, is that the board will get that every three months unless needed sooner, cause otherwise some of us haven't seen one in a year. So that will be coming more.
So maybe we wanna do something around the words, create and maintain a comprehensive facilities plan. That addresses the needs of programming. And and levels of enrollment and includes financial plan.
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
Yes. They'll be right there when I get that done.
Cause obviously some of the stuff that we're talking about is probably gonna require a public vote at some point.
Yep. Alright, what do you think, guys? Think it worth your effort instead of doing this?
I think we did.
Definitely did.
Yes.
Yep.
And the any of the community people that I visited with, following the strategic plan, felt very good about being in. They felt very good about having input in it.
Good.
Yeah, I heard a lot of comments like.
Even those that weren't able to volunteer said the same thing, we're happy that you have community here, not just you and teachers and staff and administration.
Like they're working together really is kind of physical.
Alright, well, we'll get started on this. You guys wanna keep rolling and you wanna take, you wanna stretch your legs?
Well, you know me, I'll take a quick stretch.
Alright.
Like three minutes.
Three minutes, alright, just a few minutes. Okay, the things that we wanna go through now are, just first, quick reminder on the five standards for board leadership. You know, we have five, the five standards are conduct and ethics, it's the first one. Second one is vision, we've been working on that the whole way through the strategic planning process. Third one is structure, fourth one is accountability. And which was brought up during strategic planning, and then advocacy and communication were also brought up, okay? So if we take a look, and you guys, six of you input to this, I didn't have Jen input, cause I dropped the ball on that, but Jen should have been a part of it. Alright, if you look at this report, it's gonna compare the results of the value, the survey that was taken in two thousand eighteen. To the one you guys just took, alright? So let's just take a look at this page four. Looks like this, it's got the summary of all the questions and it's got a line for each of the standards. Alright, so it's got standard one, standard two, three, four, and five. So if we look at standard one, um, you know, and take, you know, you have to understand that we only had six responses in twenty two. And we had eight responses in twenty eighteen, so that we're dealing with a little bit of apples and oranges there. But what we're seeing in twenty two is really you got one person. Essentially one that says everything is good. Now, this is me, this is a summary of many questions, alright, so that doesn't equate to one person. But three percent of the answers were provided responsible school district governance. Pretty small number, that's down from five percent when things weren't real happy either back in two thousand eighteen. The blue, most of the time it's gotten bigger, so that's good. Yellow is about, you know, some of the time is about the same. And never is about the same, alright? Just in general on this page, I'm not seeing enough green and blue. And this is you guys doing the reporting, this is not me, this is not the community, this is not the staff, this is you guys, alright? We got vision and we got structure, a little more blue and a little more green. So there's just so much to look at here, we can get lost in the weeds, so I'm kinda ignoring two and three. If you're okay with that. And then I'm going down to accountability. Look, we have no green on that one for twenty twenty two. And just a dab of blue. So to me, that's the hot item that we're gonna look at. And then standard five is very similar to standard one. Standard five, we're addressing some already in the strategic plan, correct? On communication and advocacy and things that you're doing with the community. I think for tonight's purpose, I would like to, this really follows falls under the leadership focus area of the strategic plan. And look at standard one and standard four. And of those then. Can we set some goals? You know, for you guys to address some of this. So let's flip to the next page and we will have one, two, three, four, five. Five pages of conduct and ethics, so that's under stand standard one. Can you look, would you please take a few minutes, look at each of these questions? Here it identifies the number of people that voted for each one and where they're at. And then let's have a discussion as to which one is the most concerning to you of under conduct, under conduct, uh, under standard number one. And then we can talk about it, alright? So what do you guys, we can do this a couple of different ways. How about if we just start going through each of the pages and see which ones you've checked off? I have a few that I've checked off, but we'll just see where you're at. Anyone have any concerns really that you wanna talk about, questions three and four on that first page of them?
I circled question three.
Okay.
It also.
Yep, that needs improvement.
At least I was happy there was no.
It should be all the time.
Yeah, it should be all the time.
I wish it was always.
So on that, can we do something with? Your mission, mission or your vision or one of your belief statements that is read at the start of each board meeting? That reminds you as you're getting into things tonight, that's gonna be at the top of your list.
Guess for me to be Cardinals, living tails, curriculum, accountability, responsibility, I mean all of it.
Anything else?
I mean, I. Either the mission or the vision statement could very well be put at the top of all of our board, you know, like we get our agenda.
Yeah.
Boom, it's there.
It's there all the time.
If you have to refer back to something, it's like, what is it, you know?
We have that for MSBA. Wherever we put our MSBA, we'll have something like that, that reminds us.
We have it on the old one, excellence for life, so it should be, it it, when this is done, it should be on all letterheads like this, it'll have it and everything we send out should be the goal.
Which one, the mission or the vision?
Should be the vision statement.
You guys agree with that? Something about the vision. So I'm gonna create a document for our discussion today that's gonna list goals for you guys. And and then you're gonna have to decide how you're gonna tackle it, alright? And you're gonna have a new chair next year, so you're gonna have to make sure the new chair is on board with all this stuff. Okay? How about page, the next page, questions five through eight?
Uh, seven.
I had seven and eight.
Cause you can't set goals for improvements if you don't evaluate.
You don't assess.
So since, yeah, and you guys haven't really done anything since that two thousand eighteen. Did you do any more with that after the two thousand eighteen, you did some?
I set up this year that the board did an eval, so we did an eval on ourselves. And then knowing this was coming, goals could be based off of this, that we have not set up a new one for the school year, waiting for this to be completed.
Okay, so this is something for the new board then. Is that there's gonna be a document that talks about goals that I'll create for you guys. But also that it's gonna be up to you to have these discussions on an annual basis or more than annual. And see how we're doing on some of these goals that hold yourself accountable. Cassidy's going, not me, sir. Okay. Uh, let's go to the next page, nine through eleven, anything there? And I I marked eleven, so what is eleven?
Policies. Use written protocols for its interactions.
So those that would be in red, is that thinking that there's too many phone calls or backdoor conversations going on? Or are we just having, are we, do we need to, we're not being forthright with some of this stuff? What is it? I'm not trying to single out whoever put red, but we need to know what we need to address here.
I think, you know, it's referring to using written protocols. You know, like there have been odd occasions throughout the year where we're looking at someone to fill a role. And the just, the interviews and everything have happened in like three weeks' time and the decision was made. Then other times people were told, oh, we always wait for weeks before we even do interviews. So there's no real standard to how that's being done. I don't know if that's common.
So this is more administration, it's not necessarily the board then.
Okay.
You're worried about administration, not following its protocols. If that's what.
I don't know if there is like a written protocol.
Well, they should, and and it's, it's gonna depend on the need for that inter, that that person also. Do they need that person, you know, and that one you're talking about, I don't know all the backstory here. So just my comment would be, sometimes we need someone today.
Right.
And other ones we don't need for another two or three months, you know.
And and for me, sometimes it's, as a board member, I have somebody from the public come up to me and say, well, this is happening, I'm like, what? I have no idea, how did you find out about that before? You know, I mean, yeah, there, some things are just.
That happens more often than not.
Yeah, you know, and and those people shouldn't be being told that anyway. But what do you mean, you know?
But this goes back, this goes back to the chain of command. And it goes back to. What the actual item is, alright? What what, there's always, we're always gonna have problems when different things pop up. And getting that communication out, if I'm a, if I'm one of these two and I'm dealing with a kid that's melting down or or whatever the case is. And I got this other thing going on besides, it comes to prioritizing, you know, and so we, you know, we gotta, but if it's just.
And mine was more towards dev subject with with hiring, I mean, you know, when people, people in the community know about hiring before the board does. I I just feel like, I'm like, well, hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah. On that, personally, I don't worry about that that much, Tim.
Right, I'm not saying it's a worry, it's a communication.
It's a communication thing. In a small town like this, that's gonna happen, and especially when you're hiring a, whether it's a teacher, a custodian, or a cook or things like that. And you may have, they may have, when they're interviewing, they may have another teacher or another staff member that's part of. another teacher, or another staff member that's part of the interview process, you're not involved with it at all. And that person runs out and starts talking. Alright. And that, if that's, for those cases, it's just like, yeah, well, it's not really my job as a board member to be on top of all those little things.
Right.
Alright, and you heard about it, that's great, alright? But if you got a concern about it, yeah, you know, let me know and, you know, but I personally, as a board member, I don't wanna know those details. You know, so you see what I'm getting, but it's, it's the small town that causes more of that problem than if we're anyplace else. So, um, communications, but I'm not trying to minimize this, alright? I'm just saying that communications are an important thing. But it's not gonna be perfect in this environment. Just because of how rumors go, and everybody knows everybody. So when something like that happens, then it's a matter of just saying, whoever in the chain of command you need to talk to, just say, this is what I heard, you know, letting you know. Alright. So do we wanna do something if that's the biggest deal that was here, which is really more communications and, and, uh, the way I had, had that in my head, and I haven't, I'm pulling this.
When I get what Dev's saying too, I mean, is there a certain, you know, obviously if all of a sudden, yes, this person resigned and we need to fill this right away? But, you know, is it, is it when it's, I don't know, I don't know a good, I mean.
Yeah. That's, that's, I think, I mean, I don't even remember how I responded to the question. But that's what would click to me is like, do we have a written protocol? And is it followed, or does, you know?
And so on those, you know, this, like I said, this is not board protocol.
I got you now, yep.
This is not board protocol, it's more about.
I got you.
Administrative type things.
Yep.
And so, which is a whole different topic.
I got you.
If we're looking at the code of ethics for the board, it's talking here about one of the sta, part of the standards. Is follow established policies, including the chain of command, by directing people with concerns to the appropriate staff. But I'm not seeing anything specifically about written protocols for interactions.
Yeah.
Um, well, here's one, probably, speak with one voice after reaching a decision. You know? So, on this, maybe then what we should do, once again, is have that code of conduct, or that code of ethics, policy two oh nine. Take snippets of that at each board meeting. Don't go through the whole thing. But it's always a part of your board packet, and you just pick a chunk to read through each time. Just to remind every board member, this is how we operate. And you'll have new board members come on, or maybe even one of you guys, well, I take issue, issue, it's one of those statements. Talk it out. Just talk it out. So under that, I'm gonna put, and this is gonna be the same answer for other concerns in here. But I'm just gonna put policy two oh nine each meeting. And we have a number of boards that are doing this now. Alright, let's go to questions twelve through fourteen. Anything there?
Since this one all bases of policy, would you suggest having community members on our policy committee, cause we don't have any? No?
That's your job as an elected official. So any que, any concerns with twelve through fourteen? The only item I had there in fourteen is encourage you to be involved with us. Okay? Be involved. And we're not gonna write it down because you didn't want to, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Alright. Let's go to questions fifteen through seventeen, anything there? I'm pretty happy with that one, with those questions, I believe you guys. Uh, the last. Eighteen through twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, we got a little blue or green on that.
Yeah. So twenty-one, you're gonna have two board members coming on that are new. Set up a mentor for each one of them.
Set up a what?
A mentor.
Oh, yeah.
Mentor. We have everything you need on our website about mentoring. Okay? So two of you are going to mentor these two new board members. And we have all sorts of goals. So I'm gonna put that down for a goal, that you will mentor any new board members that are coming on. Okay? Okay, we finished that one. Let's go to standard four, accountability. We're gonna have to sit down for that one. And we got one, two, three. Three pages on it. But we see a lot of red. So why don't you, as pages twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, why don't you spend ten minutes looking at, maybe fifteen minutes looking at that? Okay? On page twenty-one, we get questions fifty-one through fifty-four. And they all deal with the strategic plan, for the most part. Now, we just finished that, didn't we?
Yep.
Alright, so what? I'll let you talk first, I already got something written down, but I'll let you talk. What would you like to see as a goal here?
I would say maybe a six-month review. Like you look at, say, July one, you know, here's what we're doing for this school year, you get a report, say, January, and then you hit it again, May, June. To say, you know, this is what we're working on, you know? Even though this was not due to twenty-three, we've already started it now, here's where we're at with this, just in information, not only for the board, but for the public of where we're going with stuff.
So you're saying January, and then another one in the spring, or, cause you're talking about six months, so are you, I'm, I'm just, I agree with you, I wrote down two meetings there.
I'd say, well, July is technically, I would say June, July, you could do your wrap-up for the previous year with your goals that you're working on for the following year. And then do December, January of, here's what we've got so far.
Okay. Okay, any disagreements with that?
At a regular board meeting?
Regular board meeting, it's gonna be on the agenda for July, probably. It's gonna be on for either December or January, depending on the amount of work you gotta get done in those meetings, cause we got some other ones here, we're gonna probably put.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, perfect. Next page, fifty-five through fifty-seven. And let's end these out, now that we're talking about this. Friday's probably already, yeah, three cottons. I used to be in the nursery business, this is what you call flat-out selectives. Print as many pieces of paper as possible. And so this is just for your, to look at when you're actually gonna do it. What have you done so far, anything?
Um, in regards.
You set goals?
In regards to having Jen here, yeah, um, I have all three circled. We set goals, over the course of hers, we set goals in February, um, no evaluation was done, it got squashed. Goals were then set in September of twenty-one. The process was a fight, but we got through it and got her a final eval. And then now we've just set new goals, finally, that's been a process too, just last week, for this school year. So we do have something in progress for her, finally.
Alright, so.
I think we did a pretty good job of making them more specific, because that was a, that was a big downfall of the time before.
Correct.
We were trying to, they were so broad, we couldn't, you know, we, the interpretation of whether it was achieved or not was.
It's almost, it looks a lot like the strategic plan, it's, we have like a broad statement over above, and then here's your objectives, to hit those underneath each.
So I mean, what I.
Guys' evaluation, goal, I mean, I've seen them both, saw the old evaluation, and I get why it might've changed a little bit. So we sat here and kinda talked it out, and we like to use both.
Yep, I do too.
You know, but it's, it's, you know, we're trying to be as fair as we can, and it took longer because there was input from Jen, and I mean, so.
This is, this goes two ways, alright? Now that you have the strategic plan in place, using that as the baseline. Because if there's, if there's specific things in that strategic plan that you want to evaluate her on, those are some of the goals that you're gonna put on, alright? But are, if you're looking at the standards, and you're concerned about, you know, we, we've talked about communications forever. But, or school, our school finance, or whatever the cases, you can't pick out ten of them.
Right.
For her to work on, that's just ridiculous. But there may be one or two that, you know, Jen, going forward for this next year, why don't you keep this in mind? Given that you're supposed to do all this, which is just impossible. But we want you, because based on where we're at this year, to focus on this. So, uh, and like you said, getting somewhat specific, so it's accountable and measurable. Measurable is the, is the big deal.
Yep, and a lot of them have like examples, like, you know, we, we put in there, you know, engage the community, examples would be, you know, an open house night, a parent night, you know, stuff like that. So it's very, and when I put it together, when everyone submitted their stuff, I actually used your book. And went and kind of grouped them by the standards, and then broke them down even further. And then there's, yes, there's a rating system for each one of, you know, objective one has a one through five, and then so on and so forth.
So, we just wanna make sure that this happens. I can't tell you the number of times that I get a call from a board member or a superintendent. The superintendents call me more than board members do. They just say, things aren't working out. I said, has there been any evaluation? And I always hear crickets. Because they're not talking, for God's sake, they're not talking. If I get problems with an employee, the only way this is gonna be fixed is I'm having honest conversations. And, you know, so, it's gotta happen. And so what I wrote down on this one, I had, you got, you've set some goals now.
Right.
Have an evaluation this spring. And set, and at that same meeting, set some new goals for the next year. Okay? Do it right away. Don't let this slide by, cause it won't happen then. So I think, set this, evaluate, then set new goals, and then in December, probably, have a mid-year check-in. Just checking in, we're not trying to, we're just, how's it going, Jen? And then, next spring, the following spring, they have your formal evaluation, set new goals, and move on. Alright, I got that one done. Uh, last one, accountability. We're all over the board on this one, with reds and greens and blues all over the place. So, now that your number one goal in your strategic plan is.
Student success.
Student success.
Yeah? And world's best workforce, correct?
Right.
Which has all sorts of reporting on it. So now, can we set as a goal, that each June, you're gonna get all the reports? Cause that's the way it sounded, and if that needs to be tweaked, that's fine. You know, but it sounded like, end of June, maybe first of July, for your July meeting, you should be able to get your results on the, on how you did on the world's best workforce. Also, we have you, some of you are gonna be involved with the, with the committee. So you'll be involved with the planning. So all this should be addressed, I'm hoping. If you get involved. You good with that? Alright, last one, standard five, we have on pages twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. It'll take a few minutes for that. Where's the sixty-two, I guess? Sixty-two through sixty-five. Anything that you guys wanna talk about there?
I had sixty-two circled.
So what do you think that means to you? In order to get a blue or green, what are we gonna do?
I don't wanna say fight back to get more money to fund for our kids, but we gotta do something.
As an elected official, you know, and you hear it from us all the time, in all our communications. What's one, one of the things that we ask for now that the legislature's going into the session.
Increase in funding, increase that two and two.
Yeah, but what can you do individually?
Write to your.
Email.
Write to your representatives.
Email, call, text. Yeah, the new, uh, minority leader in the senate this year is a young guy from fertile. Name's Mark Johnson, an old family friend. And so I don't try and take advantage of this. His grandpa and my dad were best friends forever. But little things that I can just text him every once in a while, just to kinda keep education forefront, even though he's not on the education committee, but he's in a position of power now. And just, every once in a while, you know? We've had our state representative and state senator here a few times.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Something.
Yeah, absolutely, it's something. Trying to get them here for different events, but also reaching out so that you know they're administrative assistant. They start to recognize your name. And it's not yelling at them, it's just telling them some of your concerns, and asking, asking them to, you know, ask, if you can get them to start in a dialogue with you. Versus just sending them something and they go, oh, thank you very much. That's not going anywhere. But if you can get them to, what are your thoughts on this bill? You know, and you start quizzing them on it, maybe you can start changing some minds, so. Alright, so do we wanna put anything down as a goal for you guys on this?
I don't know what it'd be, other than once a month, you know, send an email, take a phone call.
Just, just encouraging your, you're, you're, you're on the board chair, encouraging everyone, okay, this is, these are some of the bills that are keeping up to date with what we're sending out. You're gonna get, if you watch that, you're gonna get, this is the one that's coming up with committee. We need you to contact your reps or your senator on this one that's coming up with committee. And, and actually doing it, alright? But it's only for a few months out of the year, doesn't take that long. And we're actually, got a new system in place now, where you'll be able to, when you log into it, just grab a pre-formatted, uh, deal and get it right off to, on whatever. So, uh, we just need you to be involved. So, I'll, I'll just put down a, a goal of getting involved with the legis, with the legislative session, okay? Alright. Alright. Sixty-six and sixty-seven.
I had sixty-six.
Oh, yeah.
I put how.
Well, Kingsland actually did a really smart thing back in the summer, they actually had an open house with their board. They had Bruce Clayne come in as a superintendent. And they let the public walk up, shake your hand, say hi, how are you, and ask any questions you want. And they went around and said, you know, this is, they laid it out. This is the board's job, this is, oh, Gary, this is your question? Nope, you go to the teacher. Cassidy, this is your question? Yep, you go to admin, that's not them, that is you. But it was like an open, there was a huge article in the paper, I'll have to see if I still have it, but.
Did they get a decent turnout?
I believe so, yeah.
That's good.
And I can reach out to Jackie too, cause Jackie at the time was their board chair, or even I can reach out to Kyle, who's now their interim board chair. And figure out how they set this up, but that was, I thought that was a neat idea.
If you can get them to come, that's great. And you can, you know, if you can, you know, we, all, you get all this information, it'll be giving you about your roles and responsibilities. And you can just lay it out, as to chain of command, all these things. Or you do it on a open back-to-back-to-school.
Open house, right.
That might be the best time. You know, see if that works.
This? Utilize this?
You can, yep. You can say, this is how, you put the boards here up on top, this is what we do up on top.
Yep.
This is what admin does below, just so you understand, I'm not in charge of firing the basketball.
Right.
Alright?
Right.
That's not the way this works. Alright, and so you can utilize that and, and let them go.
Do we need permission to use this?
As long as you got your name on it, and you know, if, if Bruce Clayne is grabbing it and running around the country with it, then I say, Bruce works for us, and sign. Um, but, you know, he calls me and says, I wanna use this.
Okay.
Alright, and I, we get credit for it. But you can use it to show, to educate your public.
To educate our public.
Yep. Not a problem. So I'm gonna put down a goal of, any, anything else? Any other ideas on that? I'll just put, create an event. For the public. I don't know, who it kinda talks about. Yep, we got them.
Chain of command somewhere.
We did, on, on this. This is on goal six under leadership. Okay? And, and in this one, it's really enforcing it. This would be a similar, similar deal. Enforcing it with staff and with the board, but now on this one, you start talking about it with the community. Alright. Okay, sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Any questions there? I would say, you know, sixty-eight is, you got green to red, alright? And so that always concerns me when I see, you know, when you have six people that have that bigger variety of how they view this. The fact is, is that you have a bunch of strategic, a bunch of this stuff is on the strategic plan already. Alright, so I don't see that we necessarily have to create another separate goal here. You already have it over here that you can add things to it, okay? Anything else? Getting ready to be done, aren't we? Yes, we are. Almost eight o'clock. Seek community, well, how about this one, mini seventy or seventy-one?
I think I'm both circled.
Yeah.
I thought it was just interesting that they wouldn't be exactly the same.
Yeah. In two thousand eighteen, they were almost.
So, I mean, we're elected by the community, obviously, and some of those are considered staff here too, because they are, they live in our community, but. You know, you can listen to some of the staff, but at the end of the day, you have to make those decisions as a community member. So I mean.
So the question, you know, a lot of those, many of the decisions we make on a monthly basis don't necessarily involve any big issue. This has to do with if something larger is coming around. That are we reaching out and gathering and getting a sense of, of the pulse of the community? It's not about who we're hiring, it's not about approving bills, it's not, but if you're gonna make changes to the building, oh yeah, my golly, you better talk to them.
Yeah, it's like HVAC, that's on the staff's.
Yeah.
Want list type thing, and, and I, I get that, but the community's gotta probably pay for that.
Yeah. So, so the question is, when you answered this one, were you thinking on all the different things? Or what were you thinking to put a red in, in seek community, or, or just even only sometimes? Cause you guys are the ones that filled this out. What were you thinking?
I guess to me, I was one of the, some of the times, is that, you know, if it, if we say we have a bigger decision coming up, some of the times we will table it. And then we have time to gather more information, whether it's the community, the staff, admin can do more digging, reports can be done. But to me, there's some times where we're hit the last second, and now here's your decision, I'm gonna give you only two pieces of information, and now make your choice. And to me, it's like, we don't have the time to carefully consider it, we don't have time to gather input, we're just kinda slammed with it, and I need this, I need it now, and just hurry up. That's where I came from.
So this kinda goes back then to the other question we had earlier. And that this is more dealing with staff or administration that's giving you this information. Versus do you as a board actually seek out information from the community? See if we're getting that, man? You know? So if you're concerned about not getting stuff in a timely manner, on an ongoing basis. That's more with working with your administrator and part of the evaluation with her. Okay? Question I would, the way I would read this one, if we go back up to the very top. And where it says, the benchmark of success D, soliciting input and staff and, and a wide spectrum of the community. So a diverse range of interests and perspectives on issues is considered, you know?
I would say they probably have more input from staff on things than do the community.
More than likely, more than likely, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant, you know, like the staff with HVAC, but ultimately, you know?
Yeah.
We're gonna need the community to probably fund that.
Yes.
So they're the ones that are gonna have to find, so it's not necessarily the board.
No.
I mean, so how do you?
Yeah, so for the HVAC, you're gonna have to offer bonds, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
And so, that means you're going to start pumping out information out. That's gonna come from your facilities, saying, here's the data, now we need your feedback on this, this is what, this is what we're doing. And, uh, and how can we, how can we fix this problem?
And we kinda saw some of that with our last failed.
Yeah.
Deal, you know, there just wasn't a lot of information given, all to, public meeting, you know, I mean, having a special meeting just to discuss, like, okay, here's what this is gonna be. And a lot of people said, whatever, what are the kids gaining from all this? You know, and that's where they struggled.
Yeah.
What are the kids gaining at the end of the day?
Yeah.
From sixteen million dollars?
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
So.
Well, so on this one, guys, what I would recommend is, is that you already have, after having that discussion, you know, about clarifying what this really means. I'd say, let's not do anything with this one, cause you already have a bunch of communication stuff.
Right, yep.
Alright? You're all good with that stuff, guys, I'm done for the day. I can write up those goals, I'll make these changes, all the blue on here, get this sent back to you for your next meeting. And you can put your stamp of approval on it, and then start working with your administrators, uh, getting the action, tasks put in place. Enjoy working with you guys, enjoy coming down here, so, new friends, that's always good. So thanks a lot for your time and all your effort you put into it, too. I get paid for it, you get paid.
Nice, that's nice.
Lovely sentiment. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us, okay? I just, um, this is. Our goal is just to help you guys, that's our goal. And, uh, we think we do a pretty good job of it, and, um, you know, we have a lot of competition for people that do strategic plan. But we do this because we're one of you, so. So hopefully it worked out.
Thank you.
Alright, have a great New Years.
You too.
Thank you.
So as the strategic plan is not done yet, we do not need to pass the resolution, so next, is there any comments? If not, we'd look for a motion and a second to adjourn.
What will adjourn?
Motion by Dave.
Oh, sir.
Second by Cass, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at eight oh three P M.